On time. We're gonna get started Travis. Travis. Alright, let's call the meeting to order. Amanda? Fancy hair today? Is it fancy hair day? Alright. Where are we?
I like it.
With wind blown hair. We're back from the closed session. And I'm supposed to read this. Open session, public report of reportable action taken in closed session pursuant to government code, section 54957.1, City Attorney John Barker.
Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Shucks. Alright, we will now adjourn to the regular meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and let's take roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Here.
Mayor Sue?
Here. Let's have a moment of silence. Okay, who's it this time? Not you? Alright. You're leaving then. Go.
Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
That is my ego. Alright. Item four, approval of agenda. The mayor asks for confirmation. Hey. Conversation on the right. The mayor asked for confirmation of any changes or deletions to today's agenda. Nothing on this side? How about there? No?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Item five is public comments. The mayor reads the following. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak on items that are within the city council's, district's jurisdiction, but not listed on tonight's agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot take action or engage in detailed discussion on any item that is not on the agenda. However, the council may briefly respond or refer the matter to staff for follow-up. Any responses to the public comments will be included in the next city manager's update and will also be posted on the city's website. The mayor calls Travis Inkstrom. Come on up, wherever you are.
Alright, thank you. Good evening. So my name is Travis Inkstrom and I just started my 19th year as a Mountain House resident.
Wow.
I live here with my wife and three sons and I wanted to speak today just briefly to bring some attention and encourage some urgency around cellular coverage in the city. So professionally, I work as a Director of Technology for a regional government agency in the Bay Area. In that capacity, I'm responsible for the largest government-owned commercial fiber and cellular operation on the West Coast. I mention that because I'm willing to volunteer my time to assist staff in any capacity that they need to help further this effort. So much of the city has a degraded cellular coverage. Reading about minus 110 dBm. According to cellular standards, that would be considered poor coverage or no coverage. So many of us are offset in our personal homes by using Wi-Fi calling, but there's large portions of Mountain House where you can barely even make a phone call. This is definitely a safety issue for the community and especially for our high school, where it's one of the worst spots. So in a widespread emergency, this city does not have the bandwidth capacity to handle basic communications for 911 services in a mass alert situation. The calls simply wouldn't go through. So I have three recommendations. Number one is I recommend that the city of Mountain House develop a commercial invitation for proposal to identify and select a single lead carrier to fund, organize, design, and construct adequate cellular infrastructure to meet the needs of the city, a cellular master plan. This carrier would solicit funds from other carriers to meet the capital needs of the project and pay annual license fees directly to the city for permission to operate. This will generate tens of thousands of dollars annually in passive city revenue. Number two, I recommend that you direct this carrier as part of their license agreement with the city. You don't have to sell property. You don't have to lease property. You do a license agreement to construct stealth neutral host repeaters that match the design criteria of the community and blend with the environment. Lastly, number three, I'd recommend that the city implement and allocate a portion of a cellular permit fee to pay for third-party electromagnetic interference studies so that that becomes a public document and answers all the questions about cellular safety. Have a local firm in the Bay Area, paid for by the carrier through the permit fee, examine the site, show that it is safe to operate, that it doesn't put anyone in jeopardy, and then use that as the public document. You often get more interference from riding in your Tesla or using your AirPods than you want to one of those towers. So my contact info is on my speaker card and I'd be happy to help.
Well, you timed it perfectly. Wait, but you left. What if we have questions for you?
We can follow up and...
But what if we want to respond briefly?
We can't. Which village do you live in? You've been here 19 years.
Where do I live?
No, you've been here 19 years. Which village?
19 years. We started in Wickland and then we went to Bethany. Luckily, I was renting in both of those spots and then we bought in Questa. We've been there a long time.
Okay.
Thanks for buying in Questa.
Thank you.
How about you?
The worst cellular area is Wickland.
Yeah. Is Wickland the worst, really?
Yes, it is.
It's pretty bad.
Come on.
I can make phone calls.
No.
I think that's a great idea Travis. We should definitely...
I know we're gonna follow up on that.
We should follow up. And yeah, put a whole bunch of towers up.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
That's a good idea. How come you didn't think of that Steve?
He just got downed. I'm just kidding.
Is that it for public comments?
We do have one Devon. We did want to introduce a new employee during public comment. That okay? Devon? You wanna come up and make the introductions?
Who's Devon? That guy?
Hi, council. Just wanted to introduce new engineer we have working in development engineering. His name's Andrew Peters. He started this week and comes from the city of Pittsburgh and he worked there for 10 years.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Looking forward to, you know, all the new challenges for you guys.
There's no challenges here in Mountain House.
It's all smooth sailing.
Smooth sailing. Welcome. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Devon.
Not much. Alright, at this point, we're going to item 6.1, Youth Action Committee Update. The mayor calls on a member of the Youth Action Committee.
I do that.
You do that? It says mayor does.
They always do that wrong.
The vice mayor. The vice mayor calls on a member of the Youth Action Committee.
Thank you, mayor. I'm calling up Elijah and you can give your last name and also your grade and the school that you attend. He's going to be giving the report from the Youth Action Committee and I thank you Elijah for taking time and coming out and giving a report tonight.
Good evening to the Mountain House Community Services District and members of the Mountain House community that are present in this meeting today. My name is Elijah Duchem. I'm a sophomore in high school at the Mountain House High School and I'm a member of the Youth Action Committee. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to present at the latest... I'd like to thank you for allowing me to present the latest updates from the July Yak meeting. The first item on the agenda is the Yak academics program. We plan to resume the academics tutoring program approximately two to three weeks at the start of the school year. This timeline provides students with an opportunity to settle into their schedules before we begin. The exact start date will be finalized in our next meeting in August. Second is the committee reports. The membership committee is working to register new members into Yak. Currently, we have volunteer opportunities open for our summer camp. Third is the marketing committee. The marketing committee has discussed working on and developing standardized meeting templates for social media, specifically Instagram to maintain consistency in communication and engage the youth. Fourth is the community internship opportunities. Jasmine Gutierrez from the Office of State Assembly, District 13, shared an internship opportunity. This internship is open to students age 16 and above and offers experience in event planning, outreach, and civic engagement. The fall internship is during school hours. We encourage students to apply for the next summer cycle. The required materials include a completed application, a cover letter, a resume, and a recommendation letter. For those interested, there will be a meeting greet with Assembly Member Rhodesia Ransom on August 16th at 2:00 PM at Milk and Sugar on Nugly Road. Fifth is the YAC Summer Camp Updates. The Yak Summer Camp is held Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. It's currently running smoothly. We have implicated improvements based on feedback from Yak members to engage children. We've discussed setting up a lost and found system. We are using prize systems to keep kids' attention and participation. We have also emphasized increasing clarity to make sure camp activities are successful. We've also had a highest number up to 93 kids. We're also currently in the middle of our last week of camp, which is focused on career development from July 21st through 25th. This week features guest sessions from DECA, the Fire Department, speech and debate, science lab, finance professionals, mock trial, and mock trials targeted towards kids in grades fourth through eighth. Thank you again for the opportunity to present. Are there any questions?
No questions.
If there's no questions, thank you so much Elijah for the report.
Great job.
Great job.
Alright. We're gonna move on to... Did you want to say something? No? Okay. We're gonna go to Chief Rex Osborne.
Oh yeah. I'm the first to pick this during daycare.
Does it work this time? We'll see.
Yeah, it did. So far. Mayor, council, staff, fireworks. You know, I've been doing this 45 years as a, some form or another in government and we kind of failed this year. Very seldom do you have somebody get up in front of you, an employee, and say, "We did not succeed." Yeah, you say that a little bit and you go, "I don't understand what you're talking about," but maybe it's best that I just show you. That on the, from the 30th of July to, or June, to, yeah, the 30th of July, it should be June. But anyway, from the 30th to the 5th, the agency you see up there, which is the Sheriff's Department and our own police services, the Fire Department, rank security patrol, our code enforcement unit, and our community preservation unit, spent a lot of time in the community in the efforts to prevent the use of illegal fireworks. I'm gonna show you the results of this real quick. No sound. Look at those fireworks and stuff going off.
Those them.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's them. Let me show you ours real quick. Oh. Weird, huh?
I saw a flicker.
We did catch you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll talk later. The Mountain House, we didn't really fail. What happened was is that we took a direction from the council a year ago after the war zone that we had in 2024 with fireworks. And you folks said we need to establish zero tolerance. You indicated that we need to make sure we did not have what happened before. And with your permission, we went ahead and established some extremely strict rules. Zero tolerance was zero tolerance. We had to face the fact that we had communities surrounding us that were actually selling fireworks within feet of our border. And we had citizens who were upset with us. It said, "Well, I buy them right there. Why can't I use them here?" And Mr. Mayor, we even actually had somebody say that you gave them permission.
Lies.
I think we've established before that sometimes people lie to the police. Sometimes. No, I know, it happens. But more importantly, we were pretty successful. And we could judge that just by the fact that, that our teams did such a good job and I'll tell you more in a minute, but I think our social platforms tell us a little bit. Like for instance, we had Frankie. Frankie just put a blue heart on our site after they mentioned about the fireworks. That blue heart, I think, represents the fact that they love the enforcement. Then we have Steve. He says it's about time. Mountain House is a tinderbox waiting to go up in flames. The wind doesn't help either. He's absolutely correct. So he was doing a great job. And we had this one. Elizabeth Hope Police Officers caught the individual shooting them off in Altamont on the 3:00 in the morning. And guess what? Rank did. Mountain House, great job. First year ever we had a quiet fourth. These are your citizens saying this. SB even helped us pass the word. He said, "Doesn't matter if you're a city or not. Many cities, it's illegal. Also, law enforcement can use drones. Mountain House is too dry and too windy to have any kind of fire." And this is my favorite. Hopefully, it's not covered up by the digital part. It says, this is from Love Honey, and I don't know who that is, but it says, "4,000 you out of pocket." I think that says it, that $4,000 bill is expensive. But we had other quotes that we got to go looking for when we thought about our failure. Other city leaders not in our city said things like, "They had it coming." Can you imagine you folks telling our citizens, "You had it coming"? Citrus Heights issued $300,000 in fines over the fourth on their crackdown. That's quite a bit. We don't need the money. There was, we just, that's not how we should generate it. Manteca, a little closer to home, issued 109 for illegal fireworks. And the quote from their city was, "Those unlucky lawbreakers will be surprised by the $1,000 citations in the mail." You know, that's pretty interesting. So let me show you our failure. You know what that three represents? That's the number of citations that we issued. And I actually should amend that to 2.5 because we have two that were issued by the sheriff's deputies and we have a half of one issued because we're still evaluating the video evidence from body cameras if that's enough for us to warrant that what we saw, what they heard, and what happened warrants the citation. So we're taking it very serious to make sure, but, so, three is a good idea, but 2.5. How did we successfully do this for you, for the council, and for this community? Pretty simple. We used Tall Hair Girl. We had awareness and prevention. We had social media platforms all over and they shared it hundreds of times. Mountain House Matters did a great job of sharing information about this is illegal. We have five message boards in the community and a lot of the times, people don't realize we have those, but you'll see them now advertising stuff. Five message boards that we as a community invested in and it said, "Don't use fireworks." And then you can see some examples there and we had some very creative stuff done to make it fun but still get the message across. Probably the biggest moment is the fact that we used great law enforcement. All for preventative. I think the cops were probably very bored because they didn't get to write a lot of tickets. And they could go on the bridge to nowhere and look over at Tracy and see a great show because they were out of control. So throughout the course of the enforcement, which would be July 3rd and 4th for paper purposes, we had 14 units out on patrol every night. So that included the fact that we had sheriff's deputies, our own police, and the San Joaquin County Special Task Force for fireworks came here with their drone unit and they operated as long as the wind allowed us. It's very sad what happened up in Esparta. We actually had to take two of the officers from here through the sheriff's office, requested mutual aid up there with their investigation. So we did lose a little bit of our drone ability, but the Fire Department with their tethered drone and stuff was great. The video you saw was from our Fire Department drone up in the air. So they did a good job. We had zero fires, started by fireworks that I'm aware of. We had some grass fires, but, but I don't know if they're specifically geared towards improper use. So what's next? You know how we always ask you folks when we're asking for something, this is our action item and what we're gonna do? How about we get your thanks and your blessing for us to move forward in 2026 with the identical dedication to the prevention of fires, prevention of injuries, and we have a zero tolerance for fireworks? So as Director of Public Safety, I'm asking you to today, so next year when I'm standing in front of you, I can tell you, you told us. Let's do the same thing. So if you have any questions regarding that, I can break down other details, but I think you get the gist that we failed by three. So, any questions for me?
I think Councilman Disco had a question.
No, it is more of a statement. Good job.
Wait, your question was who's they?
Oh, I did have a question. Who is they on the video?
Who's what?
They?
Them.
There was them and us. Oh, thanks. Them.
Oh, them? Place to those west of us here. East of us. That side.
Real footage? Not stock footage? Okay.
Yeah, those are real. Yeah. Nearby neighbor, but we don't want to accuse them of... Every community said we don't want illegal fireworks, but, and I think we'll have a battle in the future because I think there is an economic engine that drives fireworks. I've been involved in it and others have, where it's a fundraiser. But unfortunately, that fundraiser sometimes outweighs the value. If you've seen a residence burned down or you've seen a child without fingers, these kinds of things, it really truly does, it's, it's, use the commercial aspects, not the, not the home brand. So.
Comment on the left. Vice Mayor.
First of all, thank you for your very, I wouldn't say it was condensed, but very informative information that you gave. And it gives me the idea that it worked. If it worked once, you can improve upon. If you can't improve upon perfection, I think three is very good. That's excellent. In the past, that you can get that in, within two houses last year. So I would say personally, go on with the process because you did an excellent job. The whole department did an excellent job of keeping us safe because there's been so many fires. So, great job.
Comment on the right. Councilman, councilperson, green.
For the citations, were they in-person citations or are they gonna be getting the citations in the mail? And what is the citation cost?
Well, I believe the citations that were issued were in-person.
Okay.
And they were given at the mask restriction level. So it's, it could be, maybe the police people, nobody gets up here, but, because he issued them, maybe it's 1,250 bucks or it's 100 bucks, but I don't know.
Yeah, I was watching that on the, on the news and I was counting up. I saw the firefighters watching them light and they were just adding up fines.
You mean for other cities?
Yeah, Sacramento and not here, in Sacramento. Just everywhere.
Good question. Stumped me twice. Thanks.
So you failed to raise us a lot of money? $1,200. We can't even buy...
I, I will say that I asked all the agencies to provide me what the overtime stuff was and we need to thank the sheriff, the, the, the high sheriff, because he sent his team here at no cost to us. We did use our own police officers from police services, those deputies. They got paid over, but it was minimal compared to it. Rank adjusted all their schedules, so they had three officers on a night in cars, so there was no overtime. $54 for that. And then some of it, like Roger is overtime exempt, so we just worked him a lot. Those kinds of things, so.
Where's Roger?
Roger didn't feel well today.
He's still resting.
Yeah, yes.
Alright.
I have more. The next topic.
Oh, there's a next topic?
Yeah, there is the next guy.
I do have a public comment about fireworks.
Oh, I'll get out of the way.
Should we? Yeah. Ms. Singh? And then we'll finish your... Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Actually, I did not came prepared for this comment, but after hearing this detailed summary report, I wanted to just give a feedback. We are doing good. Yeah, we were able to stop fireworks, but that also stops the fun. I know we have a culture, we long history of culture we have that people will do barbecue on the July 4th and then everyone look forwards for some community fun, like they all go together where the fireworks is happening. That used to be the culture, but unfortunately, because of this high risk of fire, we are stopping it. So one of the suggestion which I really wanted to put is, just two days before the July 4th, we did a laser show for our cityhood celebration. And that was amazing. That's a new culture we are starting. So I was just, I was just wondering why not on July 4th? I know we are celebrating our cityhood, but let's do that on July 4th. And so that all the families, they can still continue with the culture of doing the barbecue at home and then everyone heads out to our Mountain House house school for the laser show. So people are not feeling that they are missing something July 4th, you know? It used to be a culture of fireworks. So if you're doing, if you're putting that much money on the laser show, I will highly recommend doing it on the July 4th itself so that it creates a new culture in our new city.
You missed the last couple of meetings, but there was a reason for that. I'm sure Councilman Disco wants to explain.
So we did, last year when we discussed whether we would do the incorporation celebration on the first or the fourth, there was a concern on the council about mixing the two because of travels, things like that. And so that's why it was delegated to be A and B holiday and celebration. I didn't, I don't think we were forward-thinking at that time that we would be doing an annual state of the city. We were more focused on what are we doing for incorporation? We were more focused on what are we doing for incorporation with everything else going on? So as far as that goes, that's why it was split and segmented into two different parts.
I agree. This is just a feedback because kids do look forward. I remember my son, Orion, they did a barbecue in the Cresta Park. And then they were a little sad when they came back, that are we going Tracy for fireworks, or what are we doing? So if our community, we are doing laser show in the evening, everybody will head out to that direction, and everybody expects something happening. So it can be a great idea. I know, I will leave it to you guys to decide and re-propose.
So the only issue is fireworks are out, drones are in, and when you put it on the calendar for the third or the fourth, the $20,000 we paid turns into a minimum of 40 and a realistic of up to 80 for the exact same show. So that's, that was...
So you guys know better.
We looked into what it would cost maybe doing it on the fourth, or you know, it's not sustainable. Once you do that, people say, well, that was cool. Or imagine you get a company who is available because all the other ones are booked, and it's not as good as this year. And then people ask, how much did you pay for that? And you say, well, it's $80,000 because we don't do it on the fourth.
No, I don't want to go there and bankrupt our city. So, yeah. No, I'm sure Matt, you will come up with an amazing idea to do something else on the July 4th. You've been always creative in doing the events. That's all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Rex, you're coming back? Maybe Matt can do his own talent show on July 4th next year? Or a hula dance?
Sign me up.
All right, Rex, second topic.
Second topic. Mountain House celebrates a lot of things. We have a lot of things that take place throughout our community. Some of it is related to our heritage and culture. We have one celebration that is 100% colorblind as to who you are, and that is National Night Out. National Night Out is coming up on August 5th, Tuesday. It'll be at the Community Central Park, and it's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Now, this is a tradition here at Mountain House, a little bit different than where other cities do. A lot of other cities have National Night Out, same time, they hold it in neighborhoods. We bring the neighborhoods to the park, and that's where we bring all the people who make a difference. I call them the heroes. For example, all the fireworks stuff, I failed to mention the fact that it was successful because of the fire department and because of the sheriff's department, our police department, and our security services. Well, this is a time for them to get there without controversy and be able to share things with you. So on that night, we're going to have a variety of things happen. One of them is we're going to have the police services and the sheriff's office will be there again with some of their equipment. Mountain House Fire will be there, and Mountain House Fire has some outstanding equipment that I think the people need to know we have. And the only way they see this is by coming out and being able to touch it. We have so many Teslas in town. Start a fire with one, these guys can put it out. Very few cities can do that. You know, we're pretty fortunate. We have the San Joaquin County Office of Emergency Services, and the city has a great relationship. And they're bringing out a lot of their toys, including some of their newest drone technology that they have. AMR will be there, and Mountain House Security and Patrol will be there. And Reach Helicopter will be there once again too, which is always a highlight. People love seeing that, and it's fun. And they could go to a lot of different communities, but they chose ours. We will not have the horses this year, even though if you would like to complain about that, the sergeant of the unit is back here. No, they, we did not get on that list soon enough, but they're very good about sharing around the community. We did have the horses come here for the summer youth program, so we kind of give and take. Now, I cannot identify who the guy is that is representing McGruff, but maybe one of the council members might recognize something there. But, so we have McGruff there, and we have Sparky. And then, of course, naturally, we have motorcycles and stuff. But the best part is that if you are from this community and you come down, and we are going to provide you with a hot dog. Now, that's all American. All right, there's what we do, and this is how we say thank you. So we'll have that take place. And again, the badges and patches and the things you see up there, this is how Mountain House functions so well, why we have a lower crime rate, why we have such a good response with our citizens. The sheriff and our police services, the fire department, Rank, and our code enforcement and community preservation officers go way out of their way to try to make sure this is a good quality of life. So this is an invitation to you folks, of course, and we have a duck tank that some of you have already said you would be in, which is great. John, the attorney has already agreed he'll come over and be in the duck tank. So we encourage you to line up and be there to dunk him. So any questions regarding National Night Out? I'll get out of the way and let the real folks get up.
No? Nothing on the right? Nothing on the left?
Next is Rank.
Rank? Who's Rank? Are they next?
Yep.
Officer Christopher Roy Cola? Welcome.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. So I'm Officer Christopher Roy Cola, and I'll be presenting to you our monthly safety report for Public Safety Security Team. So for specific incident calls, we had a number of 39. Nine suspicious vehicles, seven occupied vehicles, 10 trespassing, nine after-park hours, and three suspicious persons. We also had seven police or fire traffic control calls, 731 security checks, and 74 vacation house checks. There's also been an increase in activity in the north and south development areas. In response to this, we have made a conscious effort to increase patrol presence in those areas in order to discourage any illegal activity. We want to make it clear that illegal activity will not be overlooked or tolerated in these areas just because they're not populated. Now on to e-bikes. This has been a pretty big issue for us out on patrol here. And the main point here is that if these bikes don't have pedals, they are considered off-road vehicles or electric motorcycles, so to speak. And if they are found off-road in Mountain House, they may be towed. We are working with community preservation and the sheriff's office to try to come up with solutions for this, as well as just deal with it as it comes. Yes, sir.
You mean if they're riding on the sidewalk? Or what do you mean by off-road?
In this, it's just specify an off-road. So for example, in the parks and on trails.
If they're riding on the parks and trails? Okay. But sidewalk would be...
I don't have any specification on sidewalks as of yet, but I will work on getting that information for you. Any more questions on e-bikes? Yes, ma'am.
My question's not on e-bikes, but the question is for the vacation house checks, 74. That's very impressive. How does the public get in touch with you? Or is it publicized how people can sign up or make you aware for vacation checks?
Right, so all they would have to do is call the number displayed up on the screen there.
Thank you. That's a prompt answer. Thank you.
Yeah, we would just need basic, like emergency contact information and specific things that we should look out for if needed. And as I specified before, during these checks, we would check windows, doors, any vehicles that are in the driveways. And we have noticed an increase in residents signing up, which is really good. I can't share too much information about exactly what has happened, but it has led to us finding unsecured doors and unsecured vehicles. And we've been able to secure them before they were able to be victimized by a potential criminal. So that's been very good, and I still strongly urge people to sign up, especially with all the travel going on during the summer. Moving on to community outreach. We were able to attend the Kite Festival as well as Central Park Cinema. Both things, as far as I know, went very smoothly. And we had the distinct pleasure of helping provide traffic control and other services for the state of the city address. We were also running roadblocks for the Fourth of July Parade, and were able to attend the event that was going on in Central Park as well. Is there any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Councilman Harrison?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for all the community services that you've been doing, whether it's sponsoring the cinemas with the movies, or helping out with our, again, Fourth of July Parade and Music in the Park. And again, with the traffic control that you guys did for our first year anniversary. I wanted to thank you guys.
Well, we thank you for the opportunity to provide service to the city, and we take a lot of pleasure in engaging with everybody. This is still a pretty new concept as far as municipalities go. So being able to engage with everybody here and kind of show a face and a name behind what we do, and actually inform people of what we're capable of and what we provide to the city, it's been a really good experience. Any more questions, comments?
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Here to provide the monthly report for the month of June. For June, total calls for service were at 101 calls for service. Traffic citations issued this past month was 119. For the month of May was 128. Some of the patrol were able to issue additional citations. We had, one of our motors was gone for several weeks between vacation and training. So that kind of lowered it a little bit, but patrol was able to... And schools out too, correct, but still the traffic's still there. Parking citations were at 15. We continue to get multiple parking notices through GoGov on a weekly basis, so those get addressed within anywhere from one to two days. Seven citations were stop sign violations. Regarding DUI arrests, or excuse me... Crashes, collisions were at 18, and DUI arrests were at two.
Is that a high?
As far as collisions or the DUIs?
Yeah, 18.
18? That's been about, if you look back at average for, we've only had stats for sheriff's houses for the past year, and that's been about average.
The average, okay.
Yeah.
Seems like a lot.
Property crimes were at 15, and assaults were at six. Again, a reminder for the regarding the property crimes, lock up your vehicles. Don't leave those unlocked, unintended, and then, of course, the valuables in your vehicles. If you have to leave them in your vehicles, please put them in the trunks. We've noticed that a lot of thefts are, fall under thefts, not burglaries, because the vehicles are left unlocked, which is obviously a citizen choice. Trying hopefully to change that.
That didn't include the two cars being stolen, right? That's July?
That is the month of July, correct. Rank kind of touched on that regarding the e-bikes and all the bikes within the Green Belt and the off-road. With the issuance, the start of the city ordinance citations, we got two violations that we can go and start issuing those. We're starting to get a plan together to try and address those issues. And immediately, first step is just obviously start issuing as many citations as we can. Unfortunately, there are probably going to be tows. The dirt bikes, probably, there are probably going to be several dirt bikes being towed over the next several weeks if located. We've talked to, I know between Rank and us, that they're kind of, the juveniles have been kind of just more... They've been talked to, warned, and they kind of just like put it off to the side and continue doing what they're doing, unfortunately. Unfortunately, you can only warn someone so many times before you actually have to do some type of enforcement action. So that's kind of what we're leaning towards too. So the next couple of weeks, we're going to kind of figure out some better plan. That includes probably moving our motors to a different shift. Most of this stuff happens on the weekends and after school hours right now. During the summer, school's out, so kind of afternoon, early evening hours.
What can Rank do when they see somebody? They can't pull them over, right? Or can they?
Technically, no, because they're not law enforcement. I know they're really good about going and talking to them, but that's only helpful if they actually remain, hey, can I talk to you? And if they go talk to Rank and the officers there, that usually hopefully solves the issues. But they say, no, I don't want to, like you're, I don't have to.
Or they say just right away, I don't know, Rank's not going to chase them.
Yeah, a lot of the issues, especially in the Green Belt, is obviously you can see it across, there's only, you know, three bridges before you have to go, you know, all the way around. And they go down and up and into the neighborhoods. By the time the mark patrol, you know, the sheriff's office or Rank gets there, it's, they're gone. So.
But the sheriffs, if you see somebody riding on the sidewalk or something, you can stop them?
Correct, correct.
And cite them, and when you say tow, you mean take them away?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And those are going to be for the e-bikes, or excuse me, the dirt bikes, because they're not registered if they're on public road. That's a total offense on that. Even that is still, you can still receive citations for that, not only through the vehicle code, but through the city ordinance that were just approved.
Oh, comment?
I was talking to one of the Rank officers about this same issue. And one of, it was pretty upsetting to find out that when a Rank officer does try to speak with these kids about safety and about the bikes not being allowed, that they're, like you said, very dismissive and disrespectful, and just continue on with it. And that's pretty much a problem. So can they call you at that time, or is there information that they can get? I mean, it comes to a point where I understand Rank is limited in the things that they can do. However, to just be disrespected and threatened in some cases because they feel like these officers don't have anything that they can do? What are we doing about that? Because they need to be respected because they are protecting us also, just like you guys are. So I feel like there's a lot of issues going on here with these kids and this problem. What do we do?
And that, my suggestion to that, and we will, obviously, where we meet with Rank, you know, weekly, is to call us. If we're not there, we don't, we're not there with Rank and do the actual enforcement stopping, you know, ourselves, is to call us. They have numbers to a lot of the deputies themselves, their work cells, so they can, I know a lot of times they'll call the deputies directly, saying, hey. And whether they stop them or not, they'll say, hey, I saw these bikes either on this road, this road, this direction, or over the Green Belt, or right through the fields. Instead of going kind of from dispatch to dispatch, which by the time that gets entered, dispatched to us, it's 10, 12, 15 minutes, you know, down the road on that. But we are working with them as far as to contact us. I mean, themselves, it's kind of difficult. You have to educate the kids and the parents ahead of time. And we've already started talking about with school starting up, about getting into their, beginning of the year's X-assemblies and inviting the parents, and also, and hey, notifying the parents, and hopefully the parents can help us address some of the issues at home before we have to address them ourselves. With that, we tried to, actually, we did give information too during the most recent bike rodeo as well about the violations, and these are the violations, you know, within the city ordinance and within the vehicle code. And not only that, but it's just, if they are riding on bikes, it's no different than driving a car. And a lot of these 15, 16-year-olds don't understand that when they're told it's, well, I'm not in a car, I can do whatever I want, I don't need to stop. And that's just an educational thing, and unfortunately, it may result in $3,000, $4,000 e-bikes getting towed, or dirt bikes getting towed.
Yeah, that's good. That was one of the things that I was thinking about is education and education with the parents and stuff. So I'm glad to hear about the seminars and stuff that's going to happen in the schools to inform the parents also that we need your help. So thank you for that.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Sue. My comment is twofold. I want to commend the sheriff's department for partnering and working with the youth activity... Department for partnering and working with the Youth Activity Council and Committee on Summer Camp each year, because these are one of the, some of the main subjects that we talk about. The age range starts at second grade up through eighth grade, and of course, the older people are being there as camp volunteers. But these types of things was discussed. And I want to thank the Sheriff's Department for covering those types of things with our youth, because it does start hearing it from a person of authority in a non-confrontal environment. So I think things like this, supporting the youth camp each year, which you guys have faithfully done for the last seven years, brings a lot of credibility and letting kids know early on, safety and what's safety about. And I know you covered that this year, but thank you so much for doing that. It adds value to our community and the safety of our kids.
Yeah, thank you. I believe it does make a huge difference. And I know all the guys do appreciate going and be able to talk to the kids, because everyone has young kids, many of them, they're the same age. So, and to not only notify them of how to follow and what are the actual rules, but to keep them ultimately safe. You know, I've, I've seen kids going, just blow right through stop signs, going 15, 20 miles an hour.
And you guys covered that, and that was good.
Yeah, and, you know, like, hey, no, you have, you have to stop, you know, on it. So hopefully, you know, it makes a difference, you know, each year. So we're very fortunate to be included in it. So we, thank you.
Thank you.
Another comment, Vice.
I'm glad you brought that up. I actually have two more questions, but I'll let them go. But with this one, because I did notice that there were no helmet citations issued. And I wanted to know why.
There, I know we issued, I don't know if it was, had been this, this month. I know we had two issued so far. But we've noticed that helmets are generally being worn. Since, every once in a while, we will see one, and usually with the kids down and like the green belt. But by the time you contact, we don't even get a chance to, to contact them because they're, they're gone. But we have noticed an increase in helmet wearing by all, all the kids.
I think we need to do two things. One is increase the social media, Amanda's thing. But two, we have to follow through and actually ticket some kids. And again, you know, some people could argue we're taking fun away, but it's all fun until they crash and, you know, hurt themselves.
Yeah, I mean, you can only educate and
So much, yeah.
Be much before it reaches a roadblock. And okay, now comes the enforcement part.
Yeah, I think we probably need to start enforcing a little bit more. I don't know, just my thought. Because there are still, there are still kids out there riding very, very unresponsibly, yeah.
I would not argue that.
Yeah. Okay.
Andy?
You want to make a comment?
Would it be possible for staff to print, could we go back to that slide, please? Could staff put this on a wind mesh banner and place them in our two hotspots for these issues, so that the kids have a sign in front of their face and know they're about to get impounded if they get caught there?
Yeah.
A $300 cost plus staff to install it? It seems kind of like a easy hint for the kids, so that the kids get the message.
Yeah.
Before they lose their bikes.
Put them out everywhere. All right. Thank you. You, we, missed one, yeah.
Arrests, were 12 fresh arrests and one, one arrest in the city. And, and I touched on it last month, a little additional information. There was several arrests made regarding several burglaries. Most of them, about 50, 60% of them were out of the garages in the apartment complexes here. There was over a span of about three, four weeks, there was multiple burglaries out of that. The same, these same individuals were found responsible for multiple car thefts, including the burglary at the Wickland Marklet. They were not from this county, but were served at their residence. And multiple items, including stolen treasures from the city, were located on that. So I believe there was three arrests out of that. Two others were linked to several other thefts out of cars and trailers. And they were out of Stanislaus County. So our patrol deputies did a good job on getting as much information as they could on their, at their level, and passed it off to investigations. So they were able to ID them, whether, any arrests, and they can prove that the individuals were actually the ones driving the vehicles. That's a different story. That's between the, between the DA's office and detectives. But we're fairly sure that they were the ones responsible for it. So at least they were contacted and made aware about not to return to the city.
All right. Any of the property recovered?
There was, out of Alameda, Alameda County, there were several, there's lots of property recovered. Detectives recovered several.
Any soundboards or a dozen wireless microphones out of my trailer?
Without going into details, I believe though, that may be linked to the other.
Move on, move on, yeah. Talk to them later.
Yeah. Again, going kind of back to the Fourth of July, we had our Horse Posse and Motors in the Fourth of July Parade, and assisted with the kid camp this past two months. And we do have a change. Deputy Fuentes was transferred back to County Patrol, and replacing him is Deputy Sheriff Thomas Price. And he just started this last Monday. So he's about a week and a half in and with the city. So he's been riding with some of our more seasoned deputies here in the city, to kind of get activated to the, the streets and know the way around. And he's actually very, very enthused to start doing traffic. So, which is a very, it was one of the selling points to me on that. So hopefully, that'll increase in the number of citations as well. And he'll be assigned to swing shift.
Is he new to SGSD?
No, he has, he has about five years on, four years on. But he's been mostly primarily County Patrol.
All right. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Councilman Harrison?
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to thank your guys, especially your sergeant, for the presence they showed on the state of the city, on their class ages. It looked really sharp. And then the traffic units with the egress and ingress, as far as what traffic, was just amazing. So again, your sergeant did a heck of a job with the staff. Really made a big difference.
No, no, there's, I think there's a lot more people than we anticipated. So we have some things we can change. We're going to work on for next year. So it'll hopefully go even smoother for next year.
Vice Mayor?
And I want to thank your department and staff once again for assisting with summer camp, sharing with the kids safety needs and how to prevent fires and being safe within the home. Thank you so, not, no, excuse me. Regular safety, I'll be saying the same thing with fire department, because you guys work as a team. But just the, being safe, safety in the area.
Yes, Councilman, Councilwoman.
So the third question that I had for you is, do you have any further information regarding the incident with the person posing as a private security guard, stopping a couple going to look at houses in the lakes? So a Mountain House couple rode their bikes over Central, and they were stopped by a resident posing as a secure, a private security officer. And basically, it was a racial profiling incident, telling them that they could not be there, and calling the Sheriff's Department on them, followed them to the model homes, waited outside the model homes for them to look at it. The person that worked for the model homes even asked, "What are you doing?" And when the sheriff came and found out what it was, the person that did the racial profiling was upset because he said, "You guys took too long to get there," when he called.
I'm not aware of the incident, but I will follow up with Rex, and I'll get that information to you.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't, it was, yeah, it was, I don't know if it was 10 days. I know it was a little bit ago, maybe a week and a half or so ago. Probably a week ago Sunday. However, to have a private resident stop another resident that owns a home in Mountain House, because they said they didn't want them in that area. So when developers, this is my question, when developers hire private security wrecks, are they, and I meant to ask you this when you were up here, I'm sorry, were they, are they required to have identification on their security cars? Because you should not be able to roll up on somebody in a private car, and it's a threat. So if they hadn't have been who they were, it could have turned out different. So that is, that's my question. And I mean, I was very upset about it. So I just want to find out what happened.
If they're, if they're patrolling, they have to have the PPO sticker and number on the vehicle. If they're stationary, they don't. They can use a personal vehicle. That's, that's the BSIS regulation.
Okay, that's.
Rex?
We'll follow up after.
Yeah, I really, please, I really want to find out. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's move forward, forward. Chief, another chief. Chief Marty.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members and staff. Tonight, I'll give you the Public Safety and Fire Report for June. In the, the month of June, we had a total of 78 calls compared to last year. At this time, was 89. We had 61 medical. We had 10 alarm, good intent, three grass fires. We had four vehicle accidents. And moving forward with, with that is that we have 10 firefighters that are, are 10 candidates that are in a background right now for, for employment. We're anticipating being able to give seven job opportunities to those, those 10 firefighters that are 10 candidates, and then two lateral engineers that we're bringing in to help supplement some of our senior staffing for, for drivers. And we're hoping to be able to have them on, on, on shifts sometime at the end of September, hopefully, beginning of October. In our community engagements, we have a lot of engagements in the community through the fire department, especially through the summer. This last month and a half to two months, we did the summer programs and with, with our fire engines, we have the capabilities of being able to cool off the kiddos during, during the day. So we go out into the, the different programs and, and display our engine and our equipment, and then treat them with a nice, cool afternoon. And to include some of the, the teachers and instructors that are out there as well. We also, in the month of June, responded to one water rescue call, which was out into one of the cuts that we have out here in the Delta. And we assisted Sam, Samhain Sheriff's Office, their dive team, South County Fire Protection Authority, and Tracy PD. Our water rescue team was out there as well as one of our drone operators. And we, unfortunately, we were able to, the dive team did recover one of the participants that was in, in the water. The, some of the things that I don't have up here is the fireworks. I mean, we've talked a lot about that, so I'm not going to talk too much about that. But I do like to say thank you to Rex and to the other agencies, the Sheriff's Department, Rank, and our code enforcement, if it wasn't. And also Amanda, with the public social media output, it definitely made a difference. I was in one community towards the end of the night, especially the community I live in. And it was not like it was here. And I think it was very peaceful. Not to say that the skies weren't lit up, but they weren't as lit up as they were before. And I do want to say thank you to the community for adhering to our concerns and the safety of our community. It definitely paid off this year. And so I want to thank you for allowing us to be able to do what we do, and then for the community for participating in a safe holiday as well. We do have a strike team that just returned this evening. As I was here, they returned from the Green Fire up in Shasta County. They were up there for 10 days. Two of our members from our Mountain House station was part of that team. And so we're, we're thankful that they returned safely. And one other thing is, recently, we've been able to have a good communication with both our SO and Rank. We have a communication system that we use for calls, and we've been able to allow a partnership with them. So when we do, we do go on calls, that's why you're probably seeing some more traffic safety and some on, on medical calls. Now, we have a more global community outreach in, in our public agencies through our active 911 responses. So we're thankful that we're able to bring our communications together to be able to support and, and provide a better service to our community. Any questions?
Want to make a quick comment?
I'll make a comment. I don't have any questions.
Quick.
Do want to make a comment. Want to thank the fire department for continually supporting the youth, youth with the summer camp program. And you're coming out and training the kids on CPR, and making them feel safe and included, and letting them know how important fire prevention is to not only their family, but that's a lot of help. And the kids feel so comfortable and so good about you're taking the time, and they love the fire hats. But it, it makes the children in the community feel good that they, with the service that the fire department does, and how this, and how the fire department supports, not only in fires, but supports them individually.
Thank you.
I want to thank you on behalf of the Youth Action Committee.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to item seven is consent items. What am I supposed to say here? Do you want to, anybody want to pull anything out of the consent calendar?
I do.
You do? Which one?
7.3.
7.3 is pulled. Anything else? If not, then let's go ahead and approve the rest of the sevens, the consent items. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
All right, we'll go back to 7.3. Did you have a question on 7.3?
I have a lot of questions on 7.3.
Oh, really?
I do. I, I think it's, we should bring it back for another, another time, not tonight.
Steve, what do you think? What's a lot of questions? 20 questions?
Maybe 50.
Actually, then, let's do this. Why don't you meet with Sarah offline first and sort out some of these questions? And if there's some major discovery, then bring it back to the next meeting, instead of going through it here.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
I have a comment on that. Normally, when we pull something, it's pulled out and we discuss it at the time and just put it on open agenda. Why are we not doing that now, then?
No, we, we can still approve this item. They can, because she has a lot of questions.
You have, okay, more than what would be normal for us to handle now?
I mean, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I think it would, I think it would take a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let them sort it out offline first, and then, okay.
Because that's not, we hadn't done that in the past, but that's good.
Yeah, just because if there's, if there's a lot of questions.
There's a lot, more than what could be discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
So can we approve it now? And then, I mean, we can always bring it back next time, right?
We'd have to pull it.
Okay. So you want a motion to approve 7.3?
No, we can't approve.
No, just bring it back next time. Okay. All right, let's move on then to 8.1. Is this you two?
I'm not going anywhere.
Approval of resolution imposing liens for unpaid service charges for utility bills. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This item is a public hearing to hear and consider any protests made by property owners who are going to be assessed by means of property tax lien for delinquent accounts. We will, you will review the report of delinquencies, revise the report as you deem appropriate, and then confirm the report as revised. And based on that action, then we can place items on the property tax roll. And based on that action, then we can place items on the property tax roll. So as for background, the city is authorized to establish rates and fees for services and establish procedures to collect those fees when they're not paid. We have two methods that we use when we are not able to collect and that is by placing a lien on the property. The first lien is a property lien, which is recorded against the, the property where the account is owed, where it's delinquent. On a property lien though, that puts a lien on all the property owned by that property owner within the county. So we place the lien on the property, the property owner is notified because it's recorded and when they pay the lien, we release it, I mean, when they pay the fees, we release the lien and, and it's done. The second type of lien is a property tax lien and that's what we're talking about this evening. In this case, the, the delinquent amount is levied on the property and will be collected through the tax roll. We'll actually tell the county assessor to put this on the tax roll. So again, our action tonight is for you to approve the property tax lien. The process of imposing a property tax lien, just several steps. First you have to send a notice to all the property owners who are about to be leamed. You put a notice of the hearing in the local newspaper. The council holds a public hearing, which we're doing this evening. Again, the council will review the report of delinquencies, revise it as they deem appropriate and then confirm the report as revised. And if unpaid fees are not paid by August 1, we will be, be putting those liens on the tax roll. So what we've done is on June 2, 2025, we mailed a notice to each property owner of parcels with delinquent utility charges. And the notice informed each property owner of this hearing tonight. We published notices in Tracy Press on July 4, 11 and 18. And again, tonight we're having a public hearing. This next slide is just a, a copy of the letter that was mailed out on June 2 to the property owners informing of them again of the fact that we've been unsuccessful in collecting the, the delinquent fees. This, the next slide is a, a table that shows historically what we've put on the tax liens over the years. This year, we have 11. And on the next slide, you'll see those listed, but I can tell you that two of those properties have paid off the lien or paid off, paid their amount and so they won't be leaned. And I suspect we'll have more come August 1. In the past, we've been asked, you know, how, how do people know they owe the money and, you know, is it, you know, how do they get notified and whatnot? So I, I can just tell you in general that anything that has to do with the, the utility bill, late notices, a notice that we're about to terminate service, those are sent to the address that the property owner specified when they set up the account. So if they said, send it to my renters, and they, we do that. If they said, send it to me, that's what we do. So we, that's just, it's really at the discretion of the property owner. But when it comes time for the property lien or the property tax lien, we notify the owner of record per the county assessor's office. And so again, our recommendation, review the report of delinquencies, hear any objections of property owners, make any corrections, revisions or modifications, confirm or reject the report by resolution and then we will be putting the liens on those properties if payment's not received by August 1. And again, we may receive more payments in the meantime, we usually do. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Question on the right, I mean, left?
Yeah, I, a clarification, if you go back one, one slide, go back.
One more?
Well, well, I guess I could just ask the question in general. So I, I want to be clear that for this, there's no blanket of whether you notify if there's going to be a lien, the property owner or the, I thought I heard the property owner or the, or the lease or lien holder, I mean, the renter.
Well, if, if it's the monthly bill, the property owner, the one who owns the account can instruct us to send it anywhere they say and we will do that. But when it comes time to put a lien on the property, it goes to the property owner.
Right, so we don't have a blanket where anything that is, that a lien could be placed against automatically goes to the, the property owner?
They, they're notified, yes.
Okay, and I, I guess what I'm getting at is that in a lot of cities, the person who owns the property, anything, any billing that a lien could be placed against, it, it always goes to the property owner, so the property owner knows exactly what's going on, that they do not get any surprises. If you don't have any skin in the game, many times you won't respond to things.
Right, right. And that's, that's why we tell the property owner, because this is a lien on their property. And whatever arrangement they might have with their tenant, you know, really is, is not our, ours to, to fix. But if, if they, you know, if, if the property owner has told us, send the bills to my tenant or to whoever's taking care of my bills, that's what we'll do. But when it comes time to lien a property, it goes to the owner.
And, and yes, because they're the ones that actually own it, but I guess what I'm saying is that in my opinion, it shouldn't be an option, it should be that anything that is possibly could have a lien against it, those billings always go to the owner of the property and not to another person, not unless it's a trustee or something like that, but it goes to the owner because at the end of the day, they're the ones that's responsible and to me, it stops the delay when it comes time to lien. The property owner actually saying, well, I didn't know it, I wasn't in the loop, it, or if I've known about it earlier, I would have taken care of it. And the reason why I'm saying that is because we have some history on that kind of stuff now and things have been delayed in the past because it goes around and around about if I had have known, I would have done something differently. You know, you can't do better until you know better.
I agree, I mean, but really this, you know, if, if the property owner has said, send the utility bill to my tenant, that's what we're going to do.
And not a copy to them also?
No.
I'm going to say again, I strongly suggest if you, they could send it to where, where the, the renter, but also I would send a copy to the person who owns the property also, so they're always in the loop, so we don't run into problems. If something does happen as a lien, where the, where the property owner is saying that, I would have taken care of this had I known, give both entities the information. That's my opinion on that, based on data that we have on file.
All right, any other clarification questions?
No, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Tingle, because in a lot of situations, if you're a renter, you have to have a utility bill in your name to register your child in school. But if the renter decides that they're not going to pay these bills, the owner never knows until there's a lien on their house. So it's kind of a catch 22, so that's just my comment.
Wait, I thought you just said we do notify the owner before we lien them.
Yeah, when we put a property lien or a property tax lien, the, the owner is notified.
Now, the utility we're talking about here is, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Please, yeah, light, light it up.
It's been lit.
Go ahead.
I've been getting skipped. The utility bill in question is our water and debt utility service fee, right?
That's correct.
It's my understanding that the city has a policy that only the homeowner can register for that account, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so renters really aren't in the equation then because the owner is registered by email, contact info, whoever's paying the bill maybe is a guest payment, do we still have guest payments in the new system or how do renters pay?
The owner can, can authorize the, that the bill be sent to the, a renter if they want to.
But that would just be the bill, not this, right?
I'm sorry.
That would only be the monthly bill, not what we're talking about here, right?
That is, that is correct, the liens go to the property owner.
Okay, so the, so then the rental, like she mentioned, then if the renter is not paying to the point it gets to a lien, this is the first point of notification after it has accrued how many months of unpaid?
We, we use a couple of standards and, and recent legislation extended the grace period for this, SB 998 is what it's called. So our rule of thumb is a property lien, that's not the, what we're doing tonight, but a property lien, when the bill gets up to be about $500 and it's been outstanding over a certain length of time, then we'll do a lien.
That's not that bad. I mean, on a million dollar equity, getting a notification that you have a delinquent $500 bill versus us waiting to 1,500, it's, 500 is a good threshold, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a start, yeah.
Okay, any other board clarification questions? No? Any public comments about this item? Negative? All right.
I got a 500 threshold. Yeah, I just want to talk into this on the, yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, well, 500 threshold, I don't know.
Oh, I don't know, what's that end up to? Because I have a tenant rent my property and they, they don't pay the bill and then the bill accumulate to like 800 or $1,000, then he pay like a hundred or $200 when they met the problem of when the water got turned off. Because we clearly know, realize the, the bill end up sooner or later will be the property owner's responsibility. And, but that payment plan is not act, not followed very tightly and it's one payment plan, then come back and they pay some money, then get off, for some reason get off the payment plan, then go to another payment plan. So I just recently got my property back and I paid close to 1,800 for just the water without considering not paying the, the rent. So that's a real situation in my case. So why talk to, to the, to the, you know, the, the water?
The renter?
I say, yeah, I say, we are not pay the bill and if you, you think it's, should stop the water supply as soon as possible, that's what I stand. But in reality is not. After they pay 100, 200 dollars, the, the account turn on, as the water turn on again. So that's a real situation I, I had experienced. So I don't know what to say, but it's for the property owner, it's, it's a disaster. It's a very big disaster and I believe for that kind of situation, the, the environment or the, and also, yeah, one more is I have a neighbor, as soon as I show, I show up with the property after eviction, the neighbor come ask my phone number. They worry about, oh, when you rent your property, you got to be very careful who you are renting, renting. And that neighbor come to the Mountain House community, ask for the owner's information due to the privacy and they, they, they can't get and they cannot even get the property manager's information either. And that renter, that tenant is almost every month get the police come to the building.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
I, I, I was not prepared, but since lady talk about this waters and the bill.
Well, yeah, we can continue offline, but yeah, you're, you're over your time. Any other council discussion before we pass this item? You want to say something? No. You want to say something?
So before it goes to a lien, like he's saying, Mr.
He never gave.
I know you came, I know you came two years ago with the same issue, but what was your name, sir? Yeah, I'm addressing you. I'm just, I was asking for your name, as I was, I was trying to respond to. Joe, so responding to Joe, before we send it to a lien at 500, can we send a soft warning letter at 300 so that they don't end up at 1,800 by notifying them the same way we would as the first step of the lien?
300 is like one bill.
If it's delinquent, it's delinquent, right? And if the owner has a lease, which all of them do, that say that the tenant is responsible for paying the debt utility fee and water, that's technically a violation of their lease. And if it's going to lead, lead to a lien on the property, that's, the lease is none of our business, but if it's going to be something delinquent that could lead to a lien. I mean, if they get a lien on the property, they're probably going to get evicted anyway, but to mitigate having, to do all that and get a lien, could we send out a courtesy notice at 300, 400, I don't know, what, 20% of whatever, like 10% over whatever the highest bill is in Mountain House?
Is that a change in our process?
I, I think it probably would be, but before it goes to a lien, you know, people get their utility bill, then they get their late notice, then they get their water turned off. It's not like it, like they didn't know they owe money, I mean, if, they could see it coming. Then they come in and they pay and get their stuff turned back on, or maybe they don't. But it's, it shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't be, be a surprise.
But if they don't, then they're still accruing the, they're not accruing the water bill because the service is off, but they are, the property owner is still accruing the debt utility fee, right?
That is correct, once you're connected to the system, the, you're responsible for the base charges and the utility and the debt service charges.
And what about the trash services? Would that, if they didn't pay?
Yes.
They would discontinue trash services? No, not that.
I don't, yeah, we don't do the trash, but I don't know that.
It's not billed in through? I thought it was all.
It's, it's billed on the bill, but revenue goes to West Valley. I mean, we collect.
So West Valley would make the call to stop service if they don't get paid through our system?
Right.
But we're not worrying about collecting for them if it goes delinquent?
Oh, it, we'll, we'll bill everything they owed, including West Valley. And when that is paid to us, we'll give West Valley their share.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're just trying to approve the resolution, resolution imposing liens for these 11 or nine houses now? Can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle? Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you. Are you done? Okay. Let's move on to 8.2. She stole five of your minutes, so you're down to 15. Authorize amendment number one to increase funding for agreement A2324-43 with JB Anderson Land Use Planning. I don't see JB here today.
They are here, we have Brad Wall in the audience, Brad, give a wave. All right, so good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council, Jody Elmassey, Deputy City Manager. Tonight we have for you, a staff recommendation, we are seeking council authorization for a contract amendment with JB Anderson Land Use Planning. Specifically, we are requesting a contract increase of $800,000. That would bring the total contract amount to 1.55 million. The funding allows us to maintain staffing and provide continuous service. And so with that, the recommendation also includes the authorization for the city manager to administratively take the next steps as, with the proposed amendment. All right, so a little bit of background, JB Anderson has been providing land use and environmental planning services for Mountain House since 2022. Initially, their services were provided through our contract with the County of San Joaquin. So with the approaching incorporation, Mountain House took the next steps to enter into our own contract with JB Anderson that was approved in May of 2024. That agreement totaled $750,000 and is set to expire in June of 2026. And it was initially based off the historical data. And it was initially based off the historical data provided, best resources from the county. And obviously, it was our best estimate before we really fully understood the the needs operationally as a new city. All right, so why is the increase needed? This slide is really intended to kind of hammer out the primary drivers on the the needed increase. So again, since July of 2024, J.B. Anderson has been actively engaged in all things land use planning, everything as a new city. Their support has been essential and primarily due to staffing shortages. We have two key roles that are currently vacant, our Community Development Director, and we have an Associate Planner that has been vacant for some time. Also, in general, the the volume and the complexity of the applications coming through has really increased beyond our initial projections. And really, what I want to make sure that, if I can drive this home, it's important to note that they've been critical in helping us navigate our transition from the county to the city, and they're slated to help us with a couple of heavy lifts as relates to our housing element and our general plan update, which you all approved a month away. All right, so like all disciplines throughout our city operations, we are relying relying heavily on contracted services. So in this aspect for planning, it's no different than what you've seen across other departments here. And it's been critical for us because it's able to be flexible and adapt to the ebbs and flows of development activity. We continue this approach because it's cost effective. It helps us meet the fluctuating demands without prematurely overextending ourselves with hiring new staff. And importantly, 60% is what we estimate for this new funding increase to be developer reimbursable. So where it's appropriate, where it goes back to direct development charges, it's development reimbursable. So again, this provides the flexibility to match the current development industry. All right, so fiscal impact. Again, contract right now, 750,000. We're proposing an increase to 1.55 million. That 800,000 dollar increase would be split between the general fund, and again, I mentioned that developer reimbursable fees. So again, this is based on what we see for our current activity over the last year and a half, and it could be less. If development goes down, it could be less than that amount. This table here is shown to provide that year by year breakdown, really showing that cost share between the general fund I mentioned and that developer reimbursable amount. So with that general fund allocation, 320,000, that's already been accounted for in the budget that you all approved in June. So that's already in our current fiscal year budget. So again, this contract structure allows us to scale our services to match the actual need. So with that, we're back at the recommendation. This is really to ensure that we're able to match planning capacity needs through 2026. At this point, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe I missed something. Go back a couple of slides. You just are, you're asking for 800,000 more money, but you're saying that 320 was already built in the budget? How is that? How is that possible? Like, we haven't approved the 800, so.
Yes, you have. Well, it's the amount of that money going towards the contract services. So in the bud, we have accounted for in the budget that we're going to have planning costs. But what we're doing is we're updating the contract to match that. You know, just just to go backwards a little bit, the first thing to understand is because we're a very development oriented town right now, as you know, you can have great fluctuations in the demand for planning services. And J.B. Anderson already had knowledge of all of our codes when they were contracted with the county. You approved a contract right before the beginning of last year, and we were, as as the Deputy City Manager said, we based that on what we anticipated the the volume to be. And as you know, we've had a lot of both commercial and residential projects coming through the door with both inquiries and full applications. And so last spring, as we were planning the budget, we knew that we had to increase the total volume of dollars that were going to be spent on planning. And so when we did the budget, we took into account.
I got it now.
That this was going to happen. And and it's important for the public to understand is, A, the reason, one of the main reasons we use contracted services is because if developments stop tomorrow, we do not have full time staff that we have to continue to pay. So this is all based on assuming that the developments that are being processed right now are going to continue to be processed. And then there's a portion of the cost because we need someone to oversee the general plan and how housing element processes as well. But this is primarily driven by how many developers come through the door saying, okay, we want our subdivision processed. And when those developers come through the door, they then have to place a deposit with us, and we bill them on an hourly basis for all of the planners' time. That's why you see only 40% of their cost is against the general fund, and the balance is against development.
I get it. In the budget, we put in 320 of generic planning fees that wasn't allocated to J.B. Anderson, but now we're.
This gives the authority to actually spend that.
Actually.
So it's budgeted. I don't have that authority to spend.
I get it. Question over here.
Yeah, well, she's really kind of answered it because really, we're only asking the 320, not a whole.
No, no, not even. It was already in the budget.
That's what I'm saying.
So they're not really asking for anything.
But we're approving it.
Approving the contract to use the money that was already allocated.
Right, that.
So it's, yeah.
Yeah, I did say she already answered it.
Okay.
So last year, we approved 308, 596, and 50 cents, right? That's what we budgeted for, based on the projected numbers?
Give or take.
That's what we actually spent.
That's what we spent. And then the developer paid, how does that work? They pay us, we pay the contractor?
So we enter into multiple developer reimbursement agreements with individual developers based on a project. So when we get an invoice from a consultant, we'll bill against that retainer that we have with the developers, and that includes consultant fees and even our own city staff time.
So the contract amount for this past fiscal year was 722.2?
It was almost 750,000. We've almost exhausted it.
750.
The the actual amount in the budget, the total budgeted amount we had, so there's there's.
Oh, we had a threshold, we had a threshold of 750 to float that cost from the developers until we get that money back if we need it, right? We have that buffer.
Where it's actually developer reimbursable, you know, items.
So now we're, now we're moving that 50,000 more to 800, is what you're saying? Like, we had a threshold, we had a, we had a, we had a ceiling of 750 if we needed it, even though, even though 413 or 450, whatever, would have been reimbursable. So we're just raising the ceiling 50,000 of what we had already approved last year?
We are raising it by 800,000.
Raising it by.
Increasing it.
Last year, we approved 750 for both years.
But, oh, got it, okay, okay, thank you. That answers it, thank you.
Okay. Any other clarification questions? Or did you have more? No. Public comments? You got to come up to the mic. How come Arian's not coming up? Next time, your turn.
It's already on. Thank you so much. It might be a very lame question, but I just want to know when some vendor comes to us who have a contract with the city with the increase of 800, which is almost double, do we go through the bidding process once again? Like, can cities still go for bidding process, or we have to extend the contract, whatever they're proposing?
How do you want to answer?
In this case, it's just an increase in their existing contract because they're the ones providing the services.
But they are actually proposing a double, right? It's they are increasing it by 800K, which is making it 1.5 million dollars. So my question is, again, going back to when, I know we have a long history with the J.B. Anderson, but if a vendor comes to us who have a contract and they are saying, okay, we're going to double it up, and now you have to approve 1.5 million, does the city still have a right to go and open the bidding process for it? Or we just go and suck it up?
So it's, it's my understanding that we have a set hourly rate, and we quantify how many hours we're going to need for the one or two year contract. So we've already almost exceeded what we projected for the two year contract. So this increase isn't from J.B. itself, it's from our staff and management saying, we're going to need this many more hours, which the council has to approve.
Basically, we are saying, so I think that's why when, when I, as a, as a, you know, resident, I see that number, it's, it's not very clear to us.
It's not your typical negotiation.
Because the first question came in like, okay, it was 800K, we are jumping, bumping it up to 1.5 million. That's a shocker, for sure. So I think it's the phrase is they are proposing more hours we need?
It, it's, it's increasing the ability for staff to utilize more hours.
Do we have that clarity that is it billing hours only, or they are increasing the rate also?
It's, no, 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 the contract is set. The set, the set hourly rate and services are set, and we're halfway through that contract right now, but we've almost exhausted our full budget for this bucket, right? So we're basically saying we need an extra bucket for all these extra hours we might need or we might not need. And the housing economy could crash next week, and then we don't use any of it, right?
But I will just wrap up once again, but in future, I just, because this interested me a lot, that but in future, if vendor comes in and they want, while reviewing the re, reviewing the project, contract, they come up with some kind of these numbers which we don't agree, do the city go and open the bidding process once again, or we never do that?
This is, this is new, this is new charter of water for us that we used to rely on the county for. So it was a big guessing game for us. We consulted with the county and said how many hours, and at the time, this exceeded what Mountain House historically had had pulled.
Today's prediction was not correct.
Yeah.
Well, some of this you can't predict because you don't know when the builders all last year decided they were going to come in with applications. So we ended up having 15 subdivisions come through instead of seven.
Okay.
And so it's, it's just based on the fact that we, we thought, we thought there'd be, like I said, so many subdivisions coming through, and now there's more. And it may be that next year, nothing comes in, and then there's nothing expended out of the contract. So it's purely dependent, in both planning and building, it's dependent on how much demand walks in the door.
I think, I think my suggestion to J.B. Anderson will be that if they did the presentation, that how many subdivisions came additionally, and that's how the, because it was a shocker when I saw that. I'm like, okay, I'm not paying that, like, from my taxes money, tax money. But I think what it was needed there is how much work increase happened as compared to last year, how many subdivisions was there from the developer side, and how, what is now, what is the comparison, and that's why, how to rationalize that increase. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that?
I hear.
Oh.
I, I just want to clarify, I think what she's trying to say is, as time goes on, at the end of that two years, you know, can an RFP go out and ask for other contracts to come in and maybe bid for this besides J.B. Anderson, right? Is that what, I think that's what she's trying.
At the end of the contract, yes, but not in the middle of the contract.
No, no, at the end, yeah.
Okay, your time's up. We need to make a motion. I'm, I'm actually putting time on each item now, so we don't go over. You want to make a motion, Matt?
I'll make a motion because we're only liable for 40% of this if we use all of it, and the amount of development and taxes that's going to bring is great.
Can I get a second? You just had to make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle? Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
All right, thank you. Items nine, one, two, three, and 10.1, we got five minutes for each item. So the first one is your verbal report.
Yeah, Amanda, Amanda has a video to introduce the report here.
Five minute video.
It's not a five minute video, so.
Shorter, I hope.
Our first official state of the city was a proud moment. It marked our first full year as the city of Mountain House. We're growing with pride. Every project, every event, every decision is focused on creating a city that works for people who live here. We're expanding parks, improving roads, strengthening public safety, investing in neighborhoods, and building spaces that bring people together. You can see it in the details, in the planning, in the progress, in the way this community shows up. Mountain House is being shaped by vision, action, and connection. Keep staying informed, staying involved, and keep building the Mountain House we believe in.
So I think tonight, what we wanted was to get feedback from the council on the State of the City event. If you want to, then, in question one, do you want to do it next year? Question two, if you do it next year, what changes would you like to see? And then we can start working on this.
Anybody? Dan first, Rona second, Matt third. Go.
Yeah, I think I like that, you know, we should continue it. I do suggest that maybe with, as far as with the food, maybe that goes in between or, you know, or maybe after the show or something like that, because it seemed like a lot of people came and ate and then left. And also, Amanda, why did you put in the film the police officers eating donuts at the beginning? I saw that, that's not right.
That's falsehood.
Other than that, you know, I mean, we learned from it, but I, I really enjoyed it. I think it was well put together by the Mountain House staff, and I really appreciate that.
Actually, your suggestion was already incorporated. We, we, we already talked, we had a post meeting, and we're going to put the food after the show, after the presentation. That way, people have to sit through it before they get the food. All right, Ms. Rona, you're next.
What's my name?
I have a councilwoman green. I don't know.
One, someone came up to me and said that this was actually the best state of the city that they had been to, and they said, I've been to a lot, but this one was the best one. And they said because they were able to hear from each one of us about, you know, the city and what's going on as opposed to just listening to just one person. So I've only been to one other state of the city, and so, yeah, ours was the best.
I, I take some credit for that.
Well, I, I think we all take some credit for that.
I told them that we didn't want to do it like Tracy. We wanted everybody.
I wasn't calling any names out, thank you.
We didn't want to do it like the other.
Also, though, there was an issue with it being so dark where when, when we came out, people couldn't see.
Oh, yeah.
Where they were supposed to go in the seating and stuff, so, and not being able to see, like, we saw the drone show very good in the parking lot. So I think, you know.
Well, the, yeah, the transition, we, we're going to make better because, you know, we ran way over, and the show had to start at a certain time. So people, yeah, we, that was, we, we put that in the.
You took care of that, too?
Yeah, we already discussed that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, or Disco?
If it's not 110 degree week and the weather's comparable in the low, up to the low 90s, what would you guys think if we actually did all of this? If, if, if we were to continue with the same format we did this year, what about rather than using the theater, going outdoors with it and having just? On the field? I mean, I know it's hard with, you know, obviously, we can't do the videos and stuff as easily on screens, and that adds up, but it would just, there would be no transition if we, until we have the amphitheater where we can do all of the stuff by default in one centralized location and we're relying on other facilities.
We actually will have the amphitheater by next year, but.
Not July 1st. No.
Oh, all right.
September best.
So you're voting for continuing? You, you didn't vote either.
Oh, I, I thought this was feedback.
I know, but you, obviously, if you want us to do it differently next year, you're supporting us doing it again.
I think, I think our costs are lower. I know there was a request for doing it on the 4th tonight, and just because of the increased costs on sheriff hours, medical hours, every, every, everything's more expensive on a holiday, right? Or billable hours. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of maintaining the date or possibly even bumping it to a Friday or Saturday night nearest to that date for those who commute on, what this year was a Tuesday, so for everyone at Apple who goes Tuesdays and Thursdays, they probably didn't get a chance to enjoy any of that food or even participate if there was an accident on the Altamont, they got back at 7:45 or 8:00.
Yeah, next year's a Wednesday.
And what day is the 4th?
Fourth is a Saturday.
Yeah, so that wouldn't work, that wouldn't work. And the 3rd is going to be the same cost as doing things on the 4th for some stuff.
And council, councilmember. And council, councilmember Green, you're supportive of doing it again, obviously, if we.
I'm supportive of having it again, I'm supportive of, supportive of keeping it on the same date. Whether we have the drone show on the 1st or the 4th, we're still having something for the whole community, so I don't think it makes much of a difference if it's on the 4th of July or on the 1st. It's still a drone show.
It makes a big financial difference.
No, 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 I'm saying, keep it on the 1st.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I'm saying, switching to the 4th.
Yeah, we're still offering, to your point, we're still offering a show, it's just not on the 4th, but still come out, bring your kids, your family, and, you know, still a community event, and we're saving you tax dollars.
Vice Mayor, you're good?
I'm in support of the annual State of the City. I thought it was a good event. I do think that going forward, if we don't have our amphitheater, to have it exactly where it was at the high school, and utilize our high school, because that's where a great percent of our tax dollars go into. It was a good place to have it, as far as the drone was concerned, it was well supported. However, I would see us looking into doing that on the 4th of July, and letting the State of the, the city fall on itself, because as you realize that there were about, no, 230 people inside the theater, 2,500 outside, so the support was not at the State of the City. I think we need to keep it separate, and to speak to the 4th of July, yes, most cities do separate, do celebrate it with fireworks, and I think if we looked into next year, maybe entertaining it on the, entertaining the 4th of July, drone being on the 4th of July, because to my knowledge, we didn't do any real investigation on whether or not we can get a better price on the drones, or what have you. And there's a lot of people that go into that type of work, but I like to keep those two things separate, where when you come out to celebrate and talk about the city, that's what people are focusing on, rather than being out in the field, looking at fireworks. So keep the two entities separate.
I actually like that. Even though it will cost more to do it on the 4th, probably, I do, I didn't like the transition from.
I did not like the transition, and there were a lot of kids, which I do support kids, as you know that. However, the people were out on the, the field with their family, which lets you know that we have a family-oriented community, and separate the two.
I think there's two target audiences.
There's two targets, separate target audience, and so that's my feeling on that. And as far as all the council members having a say, in retrospect, that was a very good idea, but I think going forward, maybe the soundbites that the council people give should all fall in directly in alignment with what, what our strategic plans are. Talk about the strategy items, and fill the community in on what our priorities are, and speak to those, and have more input into the speeches. End of comment.
All right, Steve, you went, you went five minutes over, it's all your fault.
Okay, I've taken in everything, and we'll report, we'll follow up.
But we, we definitely, you know, next year, we'll start the planning earlier, you know, this year was kind of last minute, we decided to do a drone show, so I think we'll just start the planning a lot earlier next year. But it was, I think it was actually a great event. We went to another one, of course, and without naming any other cities, but ours was definitely much better, so great job, staff.
I think, I think we should put an RFP out now for next year, if we're going to, or at least get RFP for both dates, so we can see the numbers.
We'll, we'll start planning earlier. Okay, we need to move on to item 9.2, because now we're minus six minutes. You got minus six minutes.
All right, we'll make it fast. All right, so tonight, we have for you a brief update. This is a discussion item only on the Veterans Liberty Garden. We'll talk very briefly about design development, refinements to our sponsorship program, and the latest with community engagement.
Can I give my check?
I love it. All right, so quick background, I'm not going to go in a lot of detail. The last council action we had was in May, where you all approved the conceptual design, and so let's take a look at, again, what was approved. So we have some beautiful renderings provided by the architect. All right, so the latest with our design development is that the architect and the consultant team, they are working hard, and by the end of this week, we are expecting to receive the full architectural engineering improvement plans. This will be the first submittal for review. Our city team is looking forward to, you know, refining that design, and then also really picking apart the final cost estimate. So again, validating the cost estimate, because that's what really, what we're focused on, our sponsorship program. So on that note, ad hoc committee received numerous feedback from citizens here saying, we want one sponsor per park element. So we've made a strategic decision to change that. It applies across the board for everything, flagpoles, concrete benches, trees, the statue, monument wall, sign wall, entrance, everything. We also added a new sponsorship opportunity, and it's the monument wall, and it's the one that we showed earlier that has all the different branches of the military, and that's for $30,000. We have also extended the sponsorship program to September 15th, so we added a little bit more time. All right, so current snapshot, where we're at. As of mid-July, we are just over $62,000. We have secured a little over $53,000 in our major sponsorships and donations. We've been really great at getting both flagpoles secured, concrete seat benches, and the central statue. We do have some sponsorship opportunities available, like we just mentioned, the monument wall for $30,000. We still have the entrance sign, that's for $10,000, and we still have some commemorative trees available.
Those are $1,000, right?
All right, on to our brick campaign. To date, we've sold 62 bricks, bringing in just over $9,000. So again, we have two brick sizes, a four by eight for $125. We also have an eight by eight brick for $250, so this program continues to be open. And of course, I'm sure you have seen some of our team at community events. You've seen Sarah, and Cousin, and Kat, different members from our team out there trying to bring in sponsorships, so they're doing a great job. In addition, Amanda just recently started a low-cost approach to additional engagement on social media, Facebook advertised ads, it's under $200, so she just kicked that off a few days ago, so we're going to see what that generates. So again, just looking to leverage any opportunity. All right, fiscal impact. At this time, we don't have an actual, actionable fiscal impact to deliver. As you know, like, we're, we're getting close to bridging that gap, so again, the early estimates were $110,000 for the enhanced features of the park, and so we're like, just over $62,000, so our, our gap that we're trying to close is just over $47,000. So we continue to do the outreach, we're looking for any feedback, any other opportunities you might have. We're exploring a possible opportunity with San Joaquin County as well.
Any questions?
Yeah, deputy city manager, are we going to have another, we're going to try to have another ad hoc committee before we bring it back to the board?
I think the intent is to have another meeting probably in the next couple of weeks, especially as our September 15th deadline for sponsorships is approaching.
But if we do sell the 10 and the 30, we're really right there, right? We're 47 short, so.
Very close.
And, and four more trees. So actually, if we sold the rest of those things, it's 44,000, so we're, we won't have to sell as many bricks as we initially, since we added that 30,000 item. Councilwoman Green?
My question is, and it's really not a question, it's more of a comment, because anybody can buy a commemorative brick to put their family member's name, they do not have to be a veteran.
Correct. Like, I'm going to buy a couple for my grandparents.
Right.
So, yeah.
So I'm going to buy one for my grandfather, who was a World War II veteran, they never met because he died from the war, and one for my son, so it doesn't have to be just a veteran. And I think that, you know, want to bring that point home to people.
Yeah, the advert, the advertisement, we can maybe even remind people of that.
But the name on the brick doesn't have to be a serviceman or woman?
No.
Okay, it's just any, any commemorative or message?
You could even put your own name on it.
Or businesses that want, you know, to support, I mean, so it's open to anybody.
So it's a sponsorship brick, then it is more of a veteran recognition brick?
Well, all the veterans actually will go in the front section, we decided that.
On the, oh, oh, they're going to take priority to the centerpiece and the eagle?
Exactly.
Got it, got it.
Yeah. You have a question, comment?
I was next.
You were next? You already said.
I was first. No, my, my question is, how much was the sign, the entrance sign?
$10,000.
I like my bench, okay, thanks.
You got it. Just sell one of your bitcoins.
I already bought it.
One bitcoin should cover the whole garden.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, Bernice is next.
Yeah, I was just going to thank Matt Disco for, for buying the entrance sign now, too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, man.
I already bought the first bench, give me a break. I bought the first anything.
I know, and you bought the, you just bought the entrance sign. Okay, Ms. Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Oh, what I was going to say is that maybe in the next announcement is that you put it out there that one could use or put a brick for your own self. It doesn't have to be a veteran, you could put one commemorating your family or anyone, your favorite dog, a favorite cat.
All right, Ms. Manticella, you got that. All right, you're next.
One last question. So the commemorative tree, how, what, is there like a plaque on it, or what does that look like?
Great question, we're actually still working to refine that. We, we want to do some kind of plaque of recognition, but in terms of size, and lettering, and font, we haven't decided any of that.
And those are $1,000?
$1,000 per tree.
Thank you.
We, we did talk maybe like a three by five, or four by six sign in front of the tree, or something like that. We did talk about it a little bit.
A little bit, yeah. We're going to work that out with the improvement plans that are being submitted.
Thank you.
All right, no, you used up your, all right, thank you. Ms. Jody? 9.3 city manager update, you are at minus nine minutes.
The manager, I guess the video's in there, right? All right, we'll be very brief, hopefully. Which one?
You can, you can announce that in your councilman, whatever, somebody do it.
Did you have a date for that?
Yeah, it's next week.
Monday.
What's going on with our video? Steve's losing time.
I'm waiting. Monday at noon?
Start ringing it, Steve.
Next, at Cortez Village.
Just wing it, Steve.
Okay.
Maybe.
I could have just mentioned it then, that, don't forget, we've got Spice, Spiceabites grand opening noon on Monday over at Cortez Village Shopping Center.
He told me 12:30.
And you did meet our new city staff person tonight, we've got some more coming very soon. Lots going on up north of Byron, including a potential rezoning request for some of the non-residential land, and in north of Byron, that will be coming back to you in the future after it's all reviewed, and you can see we have a lot of tracks north of Byron and south of Grantline Road going through approvals right now, along with the development code. You can see a lot of civil going in all over town as well, and don't forget, the bike and pedestrian pass are filling in and getting completed as we speak in College Park. Commercial-wise, you know, we're still working on the projects in Hanson Village, the new portion of Wickland, Wickland Crossing, and the, and the potential rezone across from Mustang Square. Key projects, you could see, we're finishing up, as the Pulte project goes along, they're putting in sidewalks and the rest of the improvements on Grantline Road. It is now the bridge to Somewhere, although there's still minor work going on, and of course, with the bridge to Somewhere opening, the, we'll be having signals on Central Parkway at both Arturo and Main Street, and those are just going through final engineering right now. The railroad crossings are getting very, very close, PUC review in the next month or so, and we're making a lot of progress as well on the rehab of Byron Highway that is the responsibility of Mountain House developers. And once again this year, our finance staff, kudos for excellence in financial reporting. And then, and you know, our communications, our big communications staff, known as Amanda, has been very busy this month with all the videos that we've been showing from time to time.
It starts with a quiet flow, the creek that's been part of our story from the start. A tree rises, steady and rooted, just like the people who built this town. The hills stretch across the horizon, familiar to anyone who calls this place home. The sun sets behind them, a symbol of reflection, pride, and what's still ahead. And at the center, bold letters, carried from our past, standing strong in our future. We may be a new city, but we've been a strong community for decades. This logo is our story, told in symbols, shaped by you. Our new City of Mountain House logo.
So based on your feedback and approval, here it is. And we'll be pushing it out all over, all over, but the only place you'll be seeing the city seal is on official documents and related to public safety and things like that. And you'll start seeing a lot more of this, and not just in the sky, like we saw on July Still, we're recruiting for some more part-time staff in recreation, still working on the comp study, and working on our second round of open enrollment for medical benefits for October, so very busy in human resources, along with filling up all these positions. Fourth of July, we estimated over 2,100 attendees. Tennis court revenue is up.
Fourth of July in Mountain House is unforgettable. Families line the streets waving flags as community groups and blokes roll through towns. From Main Street down Central Parkway and back, candy flies through the air, kids growl to catch it, and smiles light up every block. At the main stage, Uncle Sam takes the mic, keeping the crowd pumped and celebration rolling. It's a day full of pride, laughter, and hometown spirit. Want to be a part of the fun? Drop your favorite memory in the comments, or tag us in your photos.
We get a lot of feedback on the video versus print. So our next Central Park Cinema is on August 8th, Music in the Park, August 16th. And we're going to be pushing out a lot more information on National Night Out, as we mentioned earlier. Roger's working on a new neighborhood watch group in Hanson Village right now. The Wickland Village repaving's complete, we're now going to start working on signal synchronization. Speaking of towers, fire departments got an RFP going out for updating, upgrading their communication at their facilities, and getting, we got our, after our first year of being a city, we got confirmation from COG that we've complied with all the requirements, so we get our money. Any questions?
No questions?
No questions.
You got to come up. When is our end coming up? Then you're next.
Okay, I saw a note about the tennis court revenue, so I need some update.
The, the tennis courts that are under construction, you have a question?
Yeah.
Well, we're hoping to get all of the work done by the end of this year on the new tennis courts. The schedule has it by the end, by the time we hit rainy season, they should. The, the schedule has it by the end, by the time we hit rainy season, they should be pretty much complete, but we'll see how things go this fall. But the goal is, by spring, we should be fully up and running. Hopefully by February, March on the tennis courts. They are the top priority in the three projects that are going on out there right now.
Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, council members, along with the tennis courts, the new sport that is coming up is paddle ball. And I see that there is a lot of traction with the players, you know, playing paddle ball.
Do you mean pickleball?
Pickleball, sorry. Pickleball.
You may have the sport right.
Yeah, a new sport, sorry. Yeah, pickleball, my apologies. So are we also going to consider pickleball courts over here?
Yeah, you, you missed the last couple meetings.
I did.
The current three tennis courts are gonna be converted to 11 or 12 pickleball courts.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so on to the future agenda items.
Future agenda items. You got a question, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
You're on.
City, City Manager, Pinkerton?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Are you indicated that we passed all the requirements for COG and we'd be getting our money? How much money is that?
Well, there's about $600,000 in Measure K, and then $700,000 in various other sources. So everything that we anticipated to receive, we're receiving. But there are a whole bunch of certifications that we had to go through just to confirm all that, and we've met all those. You passed all the right resolutions last year to do that. Most importantly, we passed the ARTIF fee that the COG collects. So, because the COG now gets, when we were a county, they were also, part of the county, we also collect that. But once we became a city, we also had to agree to continue to impose that fee that goes to the COG.
I just wanted to hear the dollar mounted.
Yes.
Brings music to my ears.
All right, thank you. Item 10.1, Steve.
Yes, you can see that we've got our final couple day, final day of Yak Summer Camp on Friday, correct? And then National Night Out, Central Park Cinema. Valley Link will be holding their board meeting here, the day of our council meeting. Now cursor down a little bit. And we're scheduled to have our next, looks like it's locked up, just to make our life miserable. So we've got the central, we've got the, we're gonna talk about the restrooms at the next meeting. There we go. And, and the strategic plan, we're gonna begin our quarterly updates at the next meeting on the, the strategic plan, we're gonna give an update on GoRequest or GoGov as well. And then, I don't know, the carbon replacement, that may get bumped another meeting at this point, that's a water cost. We were gonna bring back, we've been getting a lot of requests about displays in Town Hall, oops, we lost it there. So we're gonna bring back a policy for you to consider in the future on if and how you want to be able to use that Town Hall lobby for different things. We've been allowing it on a one-by-one, case-by-case basis, but we really wanted to bring it back to the council for policy directions on when and how we would use our, you know, for donations and things like that. We wanted to bring it back to the council for, for direction.
Can we consider bringing back the Transportation Committee?
You can put that on as a future agenda item.
For next August 13?
That's up to you as the council.
Yeah. Will you squeeze that in there, Margaret? Transportation Committee.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And then, we will be coming back, we came back with the JB Anderson contract tonight. We're still working through the fact that we've issued about twice the building permits we expected, so CSG, who does our building inspection, will be coming back with a similar amendment. And in their case, virtually 100% of it's covered by building, by developer fees, but we've got to come back and amend their contract as well. And then we are gonna bring back policy on sponsorships, policies for special events as well. So that's what's up on the next meeting. And just a reminder that we need to start getting to know who's gonna be going to the league conference, so we can make those arrangements well in advance, while the airfares are still reasonable. So if you look at the, if you look down at October, that's the, we'll not be having a council meeting on October 8th because of the league, league meetings that week. So those were kind of the highlights in the long-range calendar. And it's also the opportunity, if there's anything else you wanted to inquire about as far as agenda items, that could be included.
Or you could just send it to me. Okay, thanks, Steve.
I think the Vice Mayor had one.
You have one more question? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sue. For upcoming agenda items, I would like to propose that we add in an item and discussion for putting signs for future site or future development of, there's a lot of vacant, there's a lot of construction going on and land being moved. And I'd like to propose that we consider doing some type of signage, future site of, so people in the community know what's going on behind all of those caterpillar bulldozers that are going up and leveling land. People know what's coming up, rather than calling and inquiring and second guessing. Doesn't have to be specific, but consider us putting up some type of signage as to upcoming site, what is going, what it might be. Future site of homes, future site of schools, just future side of something.
Right, in order to do that, we need to bring it back to council for consideration. So it looks like there's consensus to put that on a future agenda in the near future.
Sure, go ahead. Anything else? No? Let's move on to item 11. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Harrison, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add with the Veterans Liberty Garden, it's tax deductible, too. So if you do purchase a brick or another donation, so, Rank, please stay at the door and don't allow anybody leave until they go and see Jody to purchase a brick, please. Thank you.
I even brought my checkbook today.
Is that true?
Yes.
Yeah, tax deductible.
Maybe I'll buy the entrance sign then.
It's only $10,000.
That's only $10,000.
All right.
Take it out of my property taxes.
Councilmember Green.
Oh, but I did have something that I really did want.
No, I skipped you. Councilmember Green's next.
No, seriously, I...
She's next.
But I had my light on. I thought you were going down.
You're last.
That has nothing to do with that, come on.
Councilmember Green.
Oh, I don't mind being last.
Go.
Thank you. I did want City Manager to talk about the West Nile, the Vesta, Vesta Report, and also the Valley Fever thing, because that's something that has come up. And I think if we get ahead of it, you know, it won't be so scary.
Right, Amanda has been in contact with their public relations folks, so that we can get information out.
Okay, and, and again, I'd like to thank my council members, and a special thanks to, I don't think I did this last time, but a special thanks to Councilmember Harrison for dancing with me at the Juneteenth Festival. Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone in the room tonight. I think this is one of our better-attended council meetings, and now leading into 9:15, so thank you all for sitting through it.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
You weren't done?
Sorry, that's his last, but, Steve missed it. Spicy Bites in Cordis Plaza opens on Monday at noon, and they will be doing samplings. And I think there's an RSVP or something somewhere online on some nonprofit in the city, so.
Blah, 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 okay. Now you're done.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tingle.
Okay. And for waiting now, I think I'll do everything that was on my list, so. No, seriously, I'd like to thank the staff for stepping up and honoring a lot of the last minute requests that we have and being gracious and smiling about it. I'd also like to thank, and I think I have two of the people that's in the audience, Summer Camp has been going on for five weeks, and that is really a commitment with working with the kids in our community. But I do want to thank four of the people who have come out, adults that have come out and diligently spent four hours each day working with the kids. That's Mr. Juturo, Ms. Tina, and she's here, and also Ms. Eunice and Mr. Carter. These are adults within the community that took on as a commitment to come out and work with the kids. And I just wanted to say thank the two of you in the room, if you can just stand so I can clap for you. Mr. Juturo, okay. And thank you very much.
What do we have next? Item 12, City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything this evening.
13, City Manager, last minute comments?
Nothing more.
All right, awesome. Only, only 17 minutes over. Gonna adjourn the meeting until August 13th. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.
All right.